All right, can I make a motion, can I have a motion to make an update to the agenda to add 7A Food Service Committee Report out?
So moved.
Yep. Any discussion?
No.
You're in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All righty, so we will move forward with our first agenda item. Any public comments? Are many public out there? Um, oldie dokey. And then, so now our next, do we have our presentation? Oh, there you are. It's just a different person than us, we assume, so I was confused.
Yep.
Totally confused.
I'm like used to.
Yeah, totally keeping me on my toes. So we have our presentation on our audit report from our HR smithing company.
Why don't we, why don't you sit, you want to sit? Because they're going to want you on the camera and microphone.
Oh, that's awesome.
You get used to it.
What I handed out earlier, did you get a copy of the management letter? Okay. So that goes along with the audit. The audits were posted online a month or two ago, and the audit letter we finalized at the end of April, so providing that to you tonight. I don't know if you've had a chance to kind of look it over, if there are questions there, we can talk about some. Essentially, this is a compilation of comments. Comments that they've seen, not necessarily specifically to the Bennington School District, but we combined everything because there's consistency in how we operate all of the school districts, so they're applicable to all of our schools. And a lot of it is procedural stuff that we're just trying to clean up. I don't want to take words out of your mouth, but I mean, it's pretty straightforward and stuff that they've.
I was reading over purchase orders. And is that because we went to that new system?
No.
No?
It's another procedural thing, so we, sometimes the purchase order itself is acting as the mechanism to actually pay and invoice.
It's more of a control to monitor where the expense actually happens, more so than initiating the purchase and following the process through.
So, my name is Karen Oliveri. I am the Audit Manager. I actually am here this week to work on pre-audit for the district. Ron is usually the person that comes and sits here and does the presentation, so to speak, or so I'm pinch hitting for him today. I don't know if any of you have had the opportunity to actually take a look at the audit, or if you have any questions about the audit itself. I can hit a couple of highlights and go for questions from there.
Sounds good.
Okay. So basically, I know most everybody's concern, or what they focus most on, is your actual fund balance. So Bennington School District in 2016 had a fund balance of $1,344,653. 2017, the fund balance was $1,677,396. Of that fund balance, you had $800,867 that you assigned for your future budget, and having an unassigned fund balance of $872,529, which I'm sure got assigned for year 19.
Yep.
True. So your whole fund balance increased by $332,000. You also had a new bond this year with the energy project, so you had some bond revenues of almost $4.4 million, and also the loan itself. Your major renovations funds increased by $50,000 due to the transfer from the general fund into that fund. So basically, your revenues exceeded your budgeted amounts this year by $163,000, and your expenditures were, came in under budget by $708,000. So that attributes to your healthy fund balance. There are also, through the state or issues that are going on at the state level, mostly, I guess it affects the SU and how they're going to operate. They're mandating a uniform chart of accounts, which means every school district in the state has to use the same chart of accounts when reporting to the state. And they're also mandating, sort of mandate, I guess, they want everybody to use the same financial software. So, and they're, so that's still in the works, and then you're also going through this unification challenge that the state also is doing. So those are the, really the big effects that we see in the district in the future years. But your fund balance is healthy, and you know, you guys, there will be no over expenditures and things will go.
Thank you, thank you Renee. Can I ask a question? In other states, do they have to use the same chart of accounts?
So I can speak to the state of Maine, and in about, I'd say nine years ago, the state of Maine went through the same unification process where the state mandated that the districts were going to, we call it a consolidation and not a unification, and they told, they had a uniform chart of accounts, and every school district had to do it. They did not, however, mandate the software. What they did was build a patch between each district's software that they chose to use for their, for financial, and then they were able to upload, in Maine it's called a Metam's report, and so the Metam's, they upload on a monthly basis from their own software to the state. So there are states that have gone through the process. Charts of accounts make it, if they're standardized, make it a whole lot easier for the state with their federal funding, reporting federally. So the standardized chart of accounts probably isn't so much of a problem as it is the mandate to use their preferred financial software vendor, considering, you know, the amounts of money that you all have, have invested in the software that you currently use.
Yeah, so the uniform chart of accounts, they still haven't finalized it yet. We got a final draft of it like last week, and they wanted us to comment on it. Some districts have already adopted it, and they're still making changes to it, so they're going to have to change their chart again once they finalize. But they're trying to structure it so it's going to be easier to dump data to the federal level, so we're prepared.
And it's not a small task. It's a huge undertaking.
But this staff have been through, you know, a software change when they use the software that we have now, back in 2008, I believe it was, so we'll do what we need to do.
Gift cards for the student accounts, is that for our schools, or is it middle and high schools?
It's been more at the middle and high.
Well, in a way, I can kind of see, like, if a class gets a party, it goes to, the gift card would go to the teacher so that the teacher could get the party together.
We've been trying really hard to encourage administrators to come up with other ways to reward students. I know it's a great, that kids want, you know, they can go get what they want with a gift card. I think what we've seen a lot is with the, at the high school level, the senior only party, so the kids that are graduating, going off to college, that's been one of the things that they fundraised for, and they, you know, auction them off, so.
It's hard to track a gift card, so you don't know, you don't know who's getting the gift card, or if you go out and have an event and you get 20 gift cards, how do you know?
That's where we're going.
That, you know, so, and it's not, it's not to be accusatory, it's to protect, so that you're not accused of.
Well, especially since it's a student account.
Correct, and it is the students' monies, and we're not telling you that, you know, the students shouldn't have those monies, we're trying to protect the students to make sure that those monies are there for them.
Any other questions? Thank you.
I move that we approve the audit.
All right. Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to stay. Okay, I have a couple more things. Thank you. All right. Our next agenda item is our consent, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve our consent agenda? So moved. Second?
I have discussion on it. Firstly, the minutes were adjusted, which is fine, and then the other thing was, on the field trips, number seven, Monument went to Nature's classroom as well, and they're not listed. Is that just an error, or was it not turned in?
Monument speaking.
It was probably done along.
We had our screw to the fall.
Thank you. Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes.
And that's with the revised minutes?
Yes.
Sorry about that.
All righty, next agenda is our treasurer's report for April. Any questions, anything from you Renee on that? Any questions from what you guys reviewed in the package?
No.
Can I motion to approve treasurer's report?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any question, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And our next agenda item is the cleaning contract award, and I think Renee.
Yeah, and I don't know if Jerry, do you want to join me? We, the cleaning contractor that we awarded bid to past the spring to start July 1, submitted their, basically, notice of cancellation of the contract, termination of the contract. They gave us a 30-day notice, and with the understanding or the knowledge that we, I had met with them several times throughout the year, talking about concerns that we had, and telling them that it was likely that we would not be renewing their contract, they started losing employees, they had a tough time finding new employees, and even they tried temporary, they were looking, they went to temp agencies, they went to the state, they just couldn't maintain staff to meet the needs of our schools, so they slid that notice back. Essentially, we ended up without having a cleaning contractor as of first weekend in May. So, we, knowing that that was happening, I quickly assembled the RFP, put it back out, Jerry did a walkthrough with three companies, and we received only one bid, and that is from Janatronics. The bid came in almost $100,000 over budget, so we had a conference call, Janatronics talked about some things that we might be able to look at differently, and they were able to give us some revised pricing, so they dropped it about $40,000. We're still over budget, we're stuck between a rock and a hard place, because we certainly need to get them on board, to get them, so they can be staffed, start ordering their equipment, to get them here to relieve the temporary staff that we have in the buildings now.
You know, is Janatronics the company that we had, it was, right? And didn't we have concerns with them prior?
Yes.
And do we feel that they've addressed any of those concerns in conversations that we've had in terms of?
Well, they have a new portal that they've included in their bid package to us, which I guess has been available for a number of years, but hasn't really been utilized, so we will share this with the administrators to allow them to be providing continual feedback and stuff that we can monitor. They have layers of management, so they'll have an area manager on site going through the buildings, and then a monthly visit from the customer service manager, typically they walk through the buildings with Jerry, just to be sure that things are up to what we're expecting and what we need.
And they also said that one of the reasons increase is they hope to increase the base pay if we've been hiring, that hopefully retain employees, that is, they feel it's been one of the reasons for the quality control that we are complaining about.
That's part of my question. The other part of my question is, so I understand they're over budget for what we have budgeted, but are they over what we had previously been paying, considering the salary piece, but are they higher than what we had been paying them?
Yes.
Because I know that they were more than the company that we wound up contracting, right? They paid originally.
Only for one year though.
Only for one year.
Right. So they have, they have some startup costs that, so, you know, basically the loss of the contract that they had, they've reallocated equipment to other buildings, so they have about $50,000 worth of equipment that they're going to be purchasing. And again, they did say that they are looking to offer a higher wage to attract and retain a qualified workforce.
My concern was, at least several people reported to me that the company we had previous, not Janatronics, wasn't just hiring temporary workers, and at the end of those 90 days, they got a new set of people on purpose to save money.
No benefit.
And so the person who was hired did not get any benefits, did not get raises, did not get medical coverage. This is such a low-paying job that I would think that both of those things need to be in place. So my question is, does this new company have medical coverage?
I would assume with the full-time employment, but I can't speak to that because I have no say in how they operate the company.
Renee, have we had any cost comparison, cost analysis in comparing the cost of outsourcing, you know, to a Janatronics type of company, or hiring within our own district to staff?
The HR, Renee and I met on that repeatedly, because with this price increase, on first glance, it seems that we're getting closer to where we could bring this in-house, but when you factor in things as covering vacation time, personal time, sick days, paying benefits, and purchasing the startup equipment, no, it's still, the conclusion that all three departments came to was, it's still cheaper to outsource it, but it's a one-year contract, so it's something that we would continue to look at.
But I'd be grateful that you continue to look at that because it's a matter of human services, you know, and.
I mean, we could, Woodford has decided to go that route, but they're a smaller school with only a part-time person, so they are, they are going to, they voted this afternoon to authorize us to post a position, but we're talking 20 hours a week maximum that somebody would be there first contracting out, so.
Well, would it be conceivable if one, had one school doing that, and the other two going under Janatronics?
That's not how their bid worked, they bid on all of them, so.
Well, it has to be three.
You would have to reject the bid and then very bid it differently, and we're kind of in a tight spot now. We've had some people really step up, and we talked to a couple of them tonight, who have really stepped up to clean, keep our buildings clean, and, you know, all staff. We have some cafeteria workers working extra for us, including Jerry's crew, the overtime that's been mandatory overtime, that they've been putting in, and other staff members, and teachers cooperate in understanding that, you know, the schools aren't going to look like what they do, because, you know, the Cheshire Cleaning really kind of left us in the lurch here, and so, I don't know if we really, and we have, we're entering the summer season, which is a big cleaning season for us, so trying to get up to speed to bring people in. That's why I said, it's a one-year contract, so it gives us time to see, do we want to continue this route, or really look into the cost. But just in the, the meetings that we had on it, with all those things that I mentioned, like, it isn't simple, it's like, well, that, the cost for this building would hire two people. Well, two people wouldn't get us there, especially when we'd need coverage issues for all of the vacations and things like that.
How fast would Janatronics be able to come online and get things going? And thankfully, this isn't last summer, when you're currently, I was doing that, but.
They actually had like a qualifying statement in their bid, that due to the timing, they are going to be hard-pressed to meet our requirements for summer. So as part of the negotiations, we have, we will not be contracting with them for a set fee for summer work. It'll be an hourly basis with a not-to-exceed fee of what they have.
Clearance of background checks is another showing factor on this.
That's a, that's a huge thing now. Years ago, you just hired people, now you've got, you know, get.
How long is background check?
So we can get the state check back, like, you know, almost instantaneously, but that really only tells us what's happened here.
Right.
So the fingerprint check, if it goes further, depending on what time of year it is, it could be three to six weeks, depending on, it's a big hiring season and there's a rush, but count on at least three weeks before we would know. If we're, you know, if we were talking a building in which no children were present, that would be a different thing, but that's not even the case in the summer, so.
Right. So what are you going to do for the summer?
They have three employees still on staff that, because we haven't been more than a year that they were employed with Janatronics and were under contract with them, that they'll be able to slide over, but they're already committed to other sites right now, so it's still part of their hiring process where they're going to have to backfill, so they'll, they promise they'll do the best that they can, but again, it's not going to be ideal at the outset.
Well, it's going to get summer, isn't it?
It's a tough go either way.
So I like the fact that it's a one-year contract, so that we can kind of see how they do.
But even prior, we only had two bids, apart from, we had Janatronics and Cheshire as our bids in the first place.
There were two other companies, I mean, we reach out to probably close to a dozen, you know.
They did the walkover, but chose not to bid.
It's baked, you know.
I think we're going to have to think about what next year's going to look like.
So we do, they did bid it for three years, so we know what the increases will be, but the way that it's structured is that it's a one-year contract with two one-year optional renewals, so.
Any other discussion?
No. Are we voting on anything with it this evening?
We have to.
You're still.
Yeah, we have to.
We need to move.
I think we're stuck.
We've looked at a lot of alternatives, we're not happy about this, but maybe we, maybe we'll be very pleased with what the results are, then we'll hope for the best.
And maybe losing the contract last time will ensure that they, you know, work on their quality issues.
But the admin will have access to this portal, and they'll be able to voice concerns in real time.
And that feeds directly into the customer service managers, I guess, like, internal workflow, I guess, is what the lack of a better explanation.
Jim, I'm glad you brought up the fact that a lot of staff have been pitching in. I know a few teachers are bringing their vacuums to school, and because they want little kids sitting on clean rugs, and I just think that we should thank them, everyone for pitching in, even also.
Teachers, the staff, custodian them, people say, oh, well, they're getting overtime for it. Well, it's had a huge impact on their life, it's mandatory overtime.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're very thankful for all the help that's been, and the understanding from all the administration, and everybody throughout the district has been really good for chipping in, doing what they can do down in there, whatever.
We have a staff member from HR cleaning central office after work, too.
Well, I move to get this going as fast as we can, so that we can alleviate the burden that this has put on us.
All right, so a second to award the contract?
Second.
To Janatronics?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much.
And now, any others? All right, and thank you Renee, appreciate it. Thank you Jerry.
Thank you.
On to educational matters, we have our principal report out, so, Evers first?
I would like to segue from the previous conversation and point out how appreciative we are of the staff who have stepped up, and in particular, Dave Reifenberg and Dave Hensley, who have been showered with cards and cookies from staff members, and I'm very grateful for the staff and how they've extended themselves. And I also want to remind you, when you clean up after your. You know, I have, this is my 40th, and last year of being an administrator, being superintendent and principal at all levels, and I have to admit that all those years I had a recurring nightmare that getting in front of a microphone, that I would start singing, and believe me, you don't want to hear me sing, so I'm glad that I'll be concluding my career without breaking into a Frank Sinatra song or something like that.
The note is still young.
I didn't know where you were going, I thought you were saying you were afraid of the microphone, I'm just going to Dr. Miegic's, I know.
The, all three schools have had staff members and members of representing parents and parent professionals comprising leadership teams with the task of producing a document, the Continuous Improvement Plan. It's a template that has been developed by the Agency of Education, the design of which is for each supervisory union to have an overarching umbrella, that each of the schools would subsume their plans in support of common goals. The routes that they take would be tailored to meet the needs of each individual school and their unique needs. It required groups to invest themselves in analyzing data, disaggregating data, and looking for pathways towards success. So it brings clarity to, that template brings clarity to the process. Your root causes, your theory of action, everything that fits in forms this map, and we have submitted the continuous improvement plans, and then subsequently, the district submits, the SU submits theirs. But it brings together a lot of information, and I have a copy, just to give you an example of the process, the data collection, and this is something that we've submitted, so it's pending approval, and I would invite my two colleagues to speak to the process, and we would be welcome, any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Miegic.
Thank you.
I personally would like to hear you say.
Trust me.
I will also echo the sentiments of Dr. Miegic's to our custodian, Gary Kenny, and our staff who is helping out in collecting garbage and doing those things to make his life a little easier, because he does have his own personal commitments, and we appreciate the time that he is spending in his overtime. So, back to our continuous improvement plans, I would like to point out, again, I also have a copy of Monument Elementary School's Continuous Improvement Plan. Continuous Improvement Plan, and just recently, we have received, all the schools actually received some recommendations from an AOE representative about possible revisions, or thoughts on how we can take a second look at our, our plan, or I should say, about a fifth look at our plan, cause we've been working on them for quite some time. So our, our leadership team met last Thursday to address the revision suggestions. They completed it, and I recently, on Monday evening, went in and entered our plan into the system, into Grant Management System, the Agency of Education has provided for schools to upload their plans, and continue, and on Dr. Muegitz, you'll see on the back page at the very end, this is just phase one, okay? So this is phase one entered, and then we will be continuously going back into our plans, updating it with data, and moving through the phases that are required by the Agency of Education. I think the other thing you might want to take note to, is I had the opportunity to discuss the Integrated Field Review with you as a board, a couple months ago, I believe it was, at Bennington Elementary School, and I referred to the education quality standards, and the subdomains of the educational quality standards, and you'll notice under each of the goals of our schools, we have to refer back to those educational quality standards, and where, which ones align with the goals that we've set forth for our schools. This is a three-year plan. It's quite comprehensive, as you can see, I think ours is like sixteen pages long, and our leadership team has worked for a very long time at looking at the data for our school, and disaggregating, and really determining the appropriate goals for us. And I'd be happy to give you copies, right now it's in the pending approval time, and we're also waiting for our superintendent and assistant superintendent to review those documents on the Grant Management System. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I can't say enough about the team, my school team, that worked on this school improvement plan with me. We started back in October, five members that worked with me, hours and hours, to really take the needs assessments that we were provided by the SU, and to really look closely at those pieces that were outstanding, in terms of learning and social-emotional growth. And what I can do is just tell you in summary, that we looked very, very closely at literacy, and that actually leads along, I can't say that it, it leads, because social-emotional learning is really at the forefront of everything that's happening in our school, and we have three goals. One is to create a culture and community of literacy learners. High majority of our students are reading one to three years below grade level, and within the next three years, we have put into, we've put into place actions, resources, and initiatives that should move that forward. It's, it's a very ambitious goal. All of the action steps within that goal and the other goals are very ambitious, but we need to do that. We have a literacy integration goal, that will really move things forward. I know that Frank Barnes, if he were here, would be cheering us on. We need to get our students up to, up to par with assessment and learning using technology, so that they are able to meet the global demands of society. And then we have a third goal, which is our social-emotional learning, which combines a number of programs and initiatives, along with PBIS, to reduce the number of referrals, and to also address the trauma-informed needs in our school in particular. I can tell you that I've learned a lot this year about the needs, and I can tell you that our teachers and all staff are really dedicated to, to moving this forward. So as I say, it's a three-year plan, but I think at the end of three years, if I'm standing in front of you here, we should meet the goals that we set. So once again, after we get this approved, you also will be provided lots of information about Bennington L.'s school improvement plan. Thanks.
Okay. Will I receive your improvement plans, Donna and Edie?
After you're approved.
Okay. I, I, you probably said that, I just missed it, that's awesome.
Any other questions for our principal on the continuous improvement plan?
No, but I'm so pleased to hear that we're addressing trauma where appropriate. Anything else to present today?
Yeah, can I ask another question? Um, it, it probably, I don't know if it's a problem at Monument, but Molly and Benell, the reading scores, cause reading is the foundation of all learning. Do you have special programs that you're going to integrate in these buildings, plus what they already have?
Well, the district is introducing Reading Street, which is a new K through two program, and from the perspective of Molly Stark, creating a master schedule that allows common planning time apart from the previous schedule, which was fragmented, thirty minutes for physical education, fifty for this, and looking at logistically, the infrastructure, what needed to be changed. So now, if we were third-grade teachers, we would have a common planning period, we would have a common literacy time, so that we can have flexible grouping, based on the results of benchmark tests, so you can assess and reconfigure the learners, where you couldn't do that. So sometimes, it's not just a new flashy reading program or new software, as much as it's getting things ready structurally, that promotes collaboration, that promotes opportunities to integrate the classes across grade levels. And that's, that was a big issue here, because we were the lone VSD school that didn't have a routine, predictable, replicated schedule, where every Monday at ten o'clock, you have phys ed, and every Tuesday at ten o'clock, you have library. That, for our school, was like moving a boulder, knowing that the momentum would fuel progress.
I agree with you. It was something that I was really promoting a couple years ago, just as you were coming on, that we needed to have common time for these teachers to communicate with each other and work with each other, and assess kids together in grades. It's extremely important that...
Because the schedule was not aligned, we had interventionists at multiple grades, so they were working across several grade levels. And now, the instructional team at each grade level is comprised of an interventionist who are math and, or reading, and a special ed teacher, so that they're working together. And it's not just a direct benefit for the learners, but it's also means that the interventionist and special ed teacher are working with one grade level, three, three teachers, instead of three teachers at third, three teachers at fourth, and three teachers at fifth, and it makes scheduling easier, it promotes that collaboration, it increases the prospect of communicating. And I think the, the threshold that we needed to cross here at Molly Stark was getting things structurally set, as a platform to it, to take the next step, which is, now that we have that schedule, how can we induce that collaboration and promote success for learners through reconfiguring based on using your data, and coordinating all of those factors? So that's, now I feel that we're confident at the starting gate, and working together.
We should see great things.
I hope so.
And just so the board is aware, if you don't have a copy right now, Monument Elementary School does have five goals, and they are based on our English Language Arts, Maths, Social Behavioral, Social and Behavioral, Family Engagement, and Learning and Leadership.
I have another question.
Tell them. Yes.
So with the new reading program, that's for kindergarten first?
And second.
And, and second. So, I understand assessments probably are built into the program, but who checks on the fidelity to the teaching? In other words, in other words, you have a new program, and everybody kind of hunts and pecks, and, and so is there a consistent way to check on fidelity to the teaching program?
The first step, Jackie, and we mentioned it at faculty meetings this afternoon, the first step is to declutter. And by that, I mean, there's a tendency in all schools, that someone who comes from another school, where they use this program, and I really like that, I'm comfortable with it, or someone says, "I, I saw this free software," and eventually, what happens is you, you have this cluttered delivery system. So when the SU worked with Hill Literacy out of Connecticut, and one of the things they did was to conduct an audit, what programs are you using? And what you find are, people are going with what they're comfortable with and experienced. So the first step is to declutter, to indicate we're no longer using Fanta's and Penel's, for example. And that's causing some people to have to learn new things, but the Reading Street is new for K one and two anyway. So I think it goes back to bringing focus in the district, and ridding ourselves of this program because it's free, or this program because I'm familiar with it, and really stick to the netting. The, your grade-level collaboration, that's data-driven, encourages staff to indicate what they're using. The, another checkpoint is the teacher observation, and then literacy coaches, in terms of aligning the interventionists, who are principal resources across grade levels in, in reading. But the audit that Hill Literacy facilitated for us revealed that, and it's not uncommon, because when I was working with Hill Literacy, they explained a school district in Connecticut that had over a hundred different programs, and some of them might be a fifteen-minute spelling program that the teacher liked, or as I said, it was free software, trial basis, and the first thing we needed to do is teach the students to strengthen, and ensure that the science of teaching is, becomes a focal point, without inhibiting the teachers from the art of teaching, the way they deliver it. But we have to come to some agreement, and be consistent in the tools that we, the curriculum that we deliver, and Donna and Edie could comment as well.
Charlie, I got two questions.
Okay.
Can I have a question? In, like, say, August or September, can we have a presentation on the program?
A presentation on the literacy street?
Hopefully from the teachers.
The teachers will be receiving the materials the last week, the last week of work sessions, twenty-fifth through twenty-eighth.
So September would be a good time to hear from them? Or, or October?
Most of us, and, and we will, we have two round presentations on it, but we'll make sure it's on a future agenda when it's ready.
Thank you. That's good.
Jim, is this an SVSU program going through, because we have such a transient population?
It is, yes.
So it is going to be done SVSU-wise? If a student isn't, my question is for the principals now, if, well, every child learns different. If a child can't learn in this new system, is there a safeguard?
Yeah, I was gonna add on to what, what Dr. Muegitz was saying, to highlight that differentiated instruction is, is the key piece that we identified as, as being needed, in terms of literacy and, and really instruction across the board. The new K two program does have what they call an RTI component of it, which means teachers can go up or down within those grade levels to secure the, the appropriate instruction material that they need.
Okay.
And you'll see in the document that I handed out to you, that one of the big plans is for differentiated instruction.
Okay.
Professional development, differentiated instruction.
Just out of curiosity, how often are the teachers able to data dump and figure out where students are within that? If they, if, have they plateaued and they need an additional challenge, or are they struggling and you need to dial it down? Is that happening regularly, or is that a quarterly?
Yeah, our teachers meet weekly.
Okay.
They're a collaborative team, and they look at data on a weekly basis of all their students, what, where they are instructionally in a program, and where students are, if they are progressing, and if not, where they should address their instruction for kids, and it looks at those students that are on grade level, who need enrichment, and those who may need intervention or tier-two supports.
And are, are, is Benell and Molly able to do it that frequently as well, weekly?
We have weekly collaboration. The new program is actually, has components virtually that will give immediate feedback to teachers.
That's fantastic.
Really designed well.
Good. Thank you.
You could check.
No, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anything else tonight?
Well, thank you very much. I want to work one into these continuous improvement plans, and really appreciate all the work you and your staff have put in to it, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, on to our next agenda item, which is our policy, and it looks like we're looking to warn and update to the board member education policy.
Are we having a discussion on, is there time for discussion?
There is.
I'd like to...
Sure.
Use the make the motion.
Make the motion that you want. Okay. Board Member Education Policy, seventy-one hundred.
My second.
Okay. Any discussion, maybe?
Yes. And I'm sorry, I can't remember who our VSD policy rep is.
I think, no, it's Chris.
Chris, okay.
It was, yeah, no, it's Chris.
Okay, so he would be able to best answer my question, which was how the policy came about. I know it's been on the VSVA website since two thousand nine, so I'm just wondering why the need to bring it about at this time, or what, what discussion kind of...
Prompted that.
Prompted that, and, uh, yeah, and it's, it's sixteen, VSA five sixty-one, if anyone was looking for it there, and I was wondering if it should be cited in, in our policy as well.
So it looks like, I guess we would have to get an update from the Policy Committee to kind of get to...
I can kind of tell you.
Yeah.
Cause I was on the Policy Committee. But what happens is, every X number of years, they review the policies, so, because things get outdated, and so you don't want something sitting there from two thousand nine into two thousand eighteen, you know, because the language has changed. And so they review it at the policy meeting, then they warn it, and then it, it comes back to be voted on.
It's my belief that, is this a new, this is a new policy that wasn't existing?
I was under the impression, just because of the, yeah, the, the end section, that says when it was warned last, and when changes remain and what was voted on, that grid was blank, except for SVSU, so I was under the impression this was a new policy.
It probably is.
So it's been studied on the books since oh-nine?
But what happens is, they have a master list, and, and if you've ever sat on policy, it takes a long time to get a policy written.
Nine years.
So that everybody's...
It's taken a while off of the list, until it finally hits the table?
That's right.
Unless, unless there's a controversy.
There's a review cycle to them.
And, yeah, and if, I mean, if there was a real problem...
It jumps the queue.
It would've jumped.
Okay.
But maybe we'll put it on the...
Did I answer your question?
I think so. I'm just, yeah, mainly just the origin. And, and I noticed the current policy is that, is an eight hours required from Chris and Jim? And I was wondering, are we staying current with that? Are we, I know they talked about a retreat. Would something like that count towards that?
There's a retreat, there's a retreat in October. Is it second or third week of October?
Well, usually the SVSU has, used to, I mean, board, BSD has talked about it. We just haven't done it.
We weren't able to format our schedules.
Yeah, well, anyway, there's the retreat in October. And then there's, the Vermont School Board meets twice, twice a year.
The VSBA does the trainings in the fall.
Haven't you been to one yet?
No, the last one they held was right after I joined the board in April. And they're slowly getting their stuff updated, so I'm attending.
Yeah, they have a new person that's the head of education in the VSBA. So they're a little behind what they used to be. And we used to come, we used to have a meeting like in April in southern part of the state.
At the CDC, I think they did it in Manchester this year.
Did they have to do it in Manchester this year?
In May, they still had the April training session posted with nothing new. So I was, I was hoping they would have something new.
And then they have sideline ones too, like I.
They have virtual ones too?
Yeah, I attended one last month.
Yeah, you can do webinars too.
Right.
Okay, so your question is, are we current in our training in terms of?
Oh, no, that was a side, a side question. Well, are we current in our training? That is a good question.
Nobody tracks it.
Yeah, it's not tracked.
And I noticed in this new policy, it would be tracked. So, so that's. Tracked at the VSBA level or district level?
That would be in-house district.
That'd be district.
District policy.
No, when someone said, "No one tracks it," I wondered if Jackie was talking about at a district level or VSBA level? Which you were.
I would say.
VSBA tracks when you go to their programs.
Right, they have it online.
And if you go, we would have a, and there's a cost associated. We would have the records of who went by that.
Even for the virtual ones though, that you attend online?
We would, if you didn't register through us, if you did it on your own, we wouldn't have a record of that.
Yeah, and those are just self-registered too.
They keep a record of it, VSBA does.
And maybe we need to know if this policy includes that mechanism of what that tracking is going to look like potentially? They're saying they are going to track it, but it doesn't necessarily indicate what that looks like, correct?
Well, and I just wondered if we needed policy 7100 in, if we needed that? Or if it was, yeah, that was my main concern was, do we need, do we need this if it's already? But I'm hearing it takes nine years to trickle down, is what you're saying?
Well, you could, you don't have to vote to warn this tonight.
Right.
Which then you would instruct your representative board to go back with what you're recommending. They can bring that to that committee. If everyone agrees, I think it's added. And then if it's not a substantial change, they'll just make the change. If it is considered a substantial change to the wording, then it goes all the way back to the process. And that's what Jackie was referring to could actually have to take.
Next year?
Yeah, I mean, a quick policy from wanting to adoption with all the boards is maybe six months. And a slow one could be two years.
So it looks like what this is doing is just adding some formality into.
Training.
Into that training for board members. So, I mean, I think if we're comfortable with what they're putting forth, then we can warn it, even if we are curious later to wondering what the origin is.
And let me say this about board training, and the VSBA deals with this too. You can mandate all the board training that you want, but there's no enforcement of it. You can't remove somebody from a board, only a voter can do that. So it can't be that if you don't go to this mandated training, then you can't be on the board. That's, that's not it. So it's mandated in that way, but it is a struggle.
You know, a board member should be trained.
Mm-hmm.
I agree. I agree. But I can't force you to come.
No. So do I have a motion to approve the warn?
The warn, you already got it.
We already did.
We already did, okay.
That's right.
All right, we're in discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
All abstained.
Nays? Okay, so you got that? All righty. So we have, I guess I'm serving as the SVS rep too. What?
We have Jim up next.
Um, no, we have the SVSU rep report. We had a special meeting of the SVSU in which we tried to.
Because your, because your May meeting was canceled because of the board training, the board chair and superintendent training was the same night.
Which goes with our board member education, which is nice. So that, we had a special meeting and that was on, it was last Wednesday, correct?
Yes.
And I think the main focus was our audit.
And the, we weren't going to have, the plan was for the SU chair was not to have the May meeting since he was going to be at the training with me, and wait till the June meeting. But the payroll office said that they needed to address the non-union.
Right.
Payroll could begin to process it before the new fiscal year.
Correct. And we've changed our wording, it's not off-contract, it's non-union.
I said non-union, but they did not want me to use the word off-contract.
So we met and approved that. And so that was the big, and then we also talked, we did our consent agenda. We had some conversations about the new, help me with the title, Jim. Our new public.
Public, Public Information Coordinator.
Public Information Coordinator that was hired. And we moved forward with that. And then we will have our.
And you hired the Director of HR.
And we hired the Director of HR, thank you, yes. I don't have my notes in front of me. I was like, wait, I didn't prepare the SU report.
And that was going to also wait to June, but it was, there was a, we moved the consent agenda forward because there were also a number of special ed teachers that we wanted to make sure that we got under contract before they went elsewhere.
So, so yeah, our consent agenda and our new hires were approved and moved forward. So we had a special meeting for those reasons. And so we will have our regularly scheduled meeting at our regularly scheduled day and time for June. But that was the big purpose of that meeting, so there wasn't really, and you got, and the report we received, similar to what we received today from our audit report. So we received that as well at the SU meeting. So, any questions on that? Okay. So we have our report out from our Food Service Committee.
And that would be me. So we met on May 10th. And we're only meeting quarterly, so previous to that have been January. So, pretty cut and dry meeting generally. We had discussed the food service contract had been a question back in January. There was some verbiage in it that was of concern. And turns out everything is absolutely fine. We do not need to do anything different. And our contract is absolutely fine with the food service as is, correct? Next big thing we discussed, so we went over menus and things like that, which is great. Very complicated, I don't know how they figure it all out. And they actually went so far as to say they know which buildings prefer which foods. They're actually tracking the kids that closely. So if certain foods do really well in certain buildings, they get more of that and they adjust the menu.
Differentiate.
By, by, different foods and different menus by what the kids actually prefer to eat.
Sell those hot lunches.
Yeah. So they are selling, well, giving away breakfast and lunch. And participation is up a lot, which is fantastic. So in 20, I'm just referring to the January numbers. Breakfast, I'm saying participation, because that seems like an easy word, was up 5.2% in 2017. And lunch was up 1.3, which was great. But since then, and this is SVSU, this isn't specific to BSD, breakfast is up an additional 3% this year. So it's at 56% of our students are taking breakfast. And lunch is up as well. And that's up to 78% of our students are taking lunch, which I think is really great. And I know my children enjoy it. So, third thing that went on that I wanted to mention, and Renee might be able to help me a little bit. The procuring local products, which I think is really nice. They're using wherever possible, "local," and that's in quotes, because it depends on the season, it depends on the produce, and who can supply it and things like that. So when they say local, it's sort of a broad term for New England, New York, and local wherever available from approved locations. Did I get it right?
Yes.
But they're really making an effort to source things as close as they possibly can. So it's a really great meeting. And Food Service Committee always serves wonderful food.
I have a question. When is this contract, when is it up?
Two more years, I think.
I think we're in year, either two or three of five year contracts.
The reason I ask is because in 2020, all garbage is going to be just segregated. And I wonder if we can't include garbage from, food garbage in the contract? Because it, it means three or four separate bins. So my suggestion is we look at that for two years from now.
For composting?
Yes.
We do have composting with our current trash contractor. It's a service that they provide. And it varies from school to school, but we, they are to be moving towards that in all buildings.
Is it the same as residential where they're not charging? I had understood, because I don't have garbage service for myself, so I don't know this for sure. But I was under the impression that they weren't charging for recycling and compost. Is that true of school districts or no?
We encompass everything, so it's our trash removal, it's recycling and composting, so it's all.
So it's not a carved-out number, it's all as a lump?
Yeah.
Even for personal, it's a lump, it's not segregated out.
So that was it? Is there any questions on food service?
Thank you, Mary. Superintendent's report.
So I'll tie into the, the policy on education for board members. It is a yearly requirement by law that board chairs and superintendent attend yearly training of eight hours long. So I did go to that, I had two of the seven board chairs attend with me. So we obviously, for more to go, but I said that, you know, they do it once or maybe twice a year. And we had to travel to Lake Maury to do it. So as reading of this policy, it's possible, maybe we're a large enough group that we could get that regionalized and not in the future, and maybe improve attendance. But again, it's one of those mandates that doesn't come with a stick to it either, so.
And is there the potential that they can do it virtually with all the technology now?
Yeah, I don't know if I'd want to sit through eight hours of online training, but yeah. So that was last, that was as we discussed in both your report and where that was. Dr. Mugers is leaving, we did post for a replacement for him, that closed. We did a paper screening last week of candidates deciding who we wanted to interview. We did the first round of interviews this week. There's two board members who are on that screening committee. And the next round, the next process will be identify finalists from that group to move on to a more in-depth interview and school tour and all that. So hopefully it's moving quickly, but we're also getting anxious with that too. The Vice Chair also got this email. Traditionally, we do not do a July meeting. But in actuality, we often have special meetings in July. So just be aware of that, that we will not have a scheduled regular meeting for July. But.
We may be hiring.
We may be hiring somebody, right. The, I sent you all an email, and I know you also got it from the, probably from the VSBA. The Secretary of Education on Friday afternoon, late Friday afternoon, released her proposals to the Vermont School Board for Act 46. And for the benefit of those who may not have read through all the document, I will not read it all. But the highlight are for the impact for the recommendation from the Secretary of Education. It's no surprise. It's something that was talked about during the Act 46 study committees as a possibility. And what the recommendation from the Secretary of Education is that the four elementary school districts, Woodford, Pownell, Shaspring, Bennington, merge into one district. The MAU district remains its own district. And North Bennington would also, unless they decide that they do want to hold a vote, to withdraw from Mount Anthony. The Secretary of Education report says that they do not have the authority, because one of the things that it says in the report, that North Bennington was asking for some type of relief to be able to, without scheduling a vote, possibly leave Mount Anthony. And they said that that is not within their authority to do. Why not one district? Just, many of you already know this, but I don't know who's listening, so. The law does not give the authority to the Secretary or the staple to merge districts that don't have similar grade alignment. So they can't make one district K through 12. The timeline for this is this goes at the end of this month to the State Board. They're doing a retreat, a two-day board retreat at Lake Maury. They are public meetings, if any board members are interested in going. And then what the State, what the Secretary of Education is saying that in conjunction with the State Board, they will be doing a series of regional meetings. Calendar their schedule that we have not seen yet. All geared up towards that November date when all plans would become finalized. The other thing that's in this report is it identifies some districts that, as they were, districts in which merger is either not possible or not practicable. I wasn't really sure practicable, but that's what, so Arlington is one of those school districts, one of our neighbors, as well as.
Sunderland.
Sunderland. But there, if you read the report, it talks about redrawing supervisory borders. Secretary recommends to the, to the State Board in this report to delay doing any supervisory board boundary redrawings at this time. Because just getting these new, like if, the work to create one elementary board here, merging of contracts, we have some unionized employees, some not-unionized employees. We have seniority lists that would have to be reviewed. I mean, we do have some standardization, but not, not to the extent that's going to be needed to, you know, new articles of agreement. And, because the articles of agreement that the Act 46 Study Committee did was a pre-K through 12 board. That's not what this would be. So what the Secretary cautions is to delay that the State Board, though they don't have to take their vice, to delay redrawing of SU boundaries. And why do I mention that to us? Because on one of the last pages of the report, and they worded it in no particular order of significance, we recognize that some of the following are incompatible and some SU boundary adjustments that the State Board may want to consider. And one of them is the assigning of Stanford and/or. Sunderland. But there, if you read the report, it talks about redrawing supervisory borders. Secretary recommends to the, to the state board in this report to delay doing any supervisory board boundary redrawings at this time, because just getting these new, like if, the work to create one elementary board here, merging of contracts, we have some unionized employees, some not-unionized employees, we have seniority lists that would have to be reviewed, I mean, we do have some standardization, but not, not to the extent that's going to be needed to, you know, new articles of agreement, and, because the articles of agreement that the Act forty-six study committee did was a pre-K through twelve board, that's not what this would be. So what the secretary cautions is to delay, that the state board, though they don't have to take their advice, to delay redrawing of SU boundaries. And why do I mention that to us? Because on one of the last pages of the report, and they worded it in no particular order of significance, we recognize that some of the following are incompatible, and some SU boundary adjustments that the state board may want to consider. And one of them is the assigning of Stanford and/or Seasburg district to the Southwest Vermont Supervisory Union. So that would be, the state board doesn't have to take that, and they may, you know, the whole thing with those series of meetings, and when this now comes out, everyone has an opportunity that if you're not in agreement, you know, there's, there's time for debate and time for letting your opinion know. So what is there for us to do at this point? If we're in agreement with what the proposal is, probably not that much for us to do at this time until we see what this schedule is going to be, and what, and if the state board accepts it. And not everyone is in agreement, so I don't see really much what we do at this point, because there, the, the Act forty-six, section nine reports that Bennington and Shasbury submitted are very similar. It's not what, this recommendation from the secretary is not what the Pownell section nine report was asking for, not what the North Bennington section nine report was asking for. So.
And Woodford?
Woodford had their second vote, and ultimately did not file a section nine report, but indicated that they, you know, they, certainly by having to vote twice, indicated that it was something that they were, that they were in agreement to. So, heard, hearing no opposition from their board anyways. So, like I said, this just came out Friday afternoon, I think, well, at four-thirty Friday afternoon, something like that.
I think it's a hundred and fifty-nine pages.
I'm surprised about the Reed's barrel in Stanford, because isn't Stanford trying to work a deal with Matt Clarksburg in Massachusetts?
Yeah. But I, I don't know if that got accepted or rejected, but, and these are recommendations, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't, you know, worry about what that impact would be to us at this time, and, you know, because it.
I was surprised that Reed's barrel didn't go with Wilmington.
Yeah.
Yeah. But they have tried, and couldn't come to an agreement, you know, so, you know, we, we looked at other alternatives too, so.
So the timeline is November.
Yes.
To finalize this.
Yes.
So come November, the board, the board that had been voted on, is there going to be a revote for the board, or does that board stand?
That board, I would believe, does not stand, because remember, that was for a pre-K through twelve.
Right, so it's a different framework.
Yeah, there would have to be a different framework, different articles of agreement on what that, because it wouldn't include Mount Anthony.
Right.
And we don't know what governance model they're going to accept it. We, we lost the opportunity to select our own governments, governance models, so we don't know what the recommendation, it does talk about that we wanted a hybrid model, but it doesn't, the recommendation doesn't say what governance model it's recommending.
Right. In fact, I think the one, they said that the one that we had chosen was their lesser choice, potentially considering creation of modified unified district, unified union district. I think I read somewhere that said that wasn't their preferred model.
No, but I, that's different than talking about governance model with a makeup from the board.
Right.
We wanted the hybrid model, which is how Mount Anthony selects, so basically at large.
Right, not proportional.
Right.
So would that take, vote take place in November, or at town meeting day?
Probably the subsequent March, I would think.
Yeah. We're supposed to be up and running by the following July.
Yeah, so I would think that November, you finalize, you get all your act together, and then in March, there's a new vote, fresh vote.
Twenty.
Twenty twenty.
Yeah. All right. And then the rest, I need to go into executive session when you're ready for discussion.
Alrighty. Thank you, Jim. Any questions on any of that? Alrighty. Chair's report, I had a lot of the same topics to talk about, so Jim kind of stole the thunder. Just kidding. But do you?
VSBU's report took some of mine.
I too. I want to thank all the staff and everybody across our district for tipping in during our, the very tight space that Cheshire put us in, and appreciate all the partnership, and we really came together as a community, which is, is really great to see. So, I do want to extend my thank you. I know it's been said many times, but just wanted to make sure I got that out there as well from myself. And I also wanted to, knowing that this is Dr. Mugitz's last meeting with us, wanted to thank him for all his work over the last couple of years, and appreciate. And that's all I got. So, we just have the FYIs, and I'd like to, can anybody have a motion for us to.
Adjourn to executive.
Adjourn to, yes.
Before you do so, I do want to say, this is also Donna Stone's last meeting with us as.
Are you sure she's still going to come and sit at meetings?
And you have a hard mic. You're dedicated and lovely, and thank you.
Yes, absolutely. I'm going to miss you in our PTG meetings. I don't know what I'm going to do without you. Thank you, JD. So, can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Ask it, the motion that, you indicate that you're inviting ED Dunn to.
Yes.
Are we coming out with any decisions or more action?
More action, and I'm inviting ED Dunn into executive session.